Welcome back. We are ready to begin our workshop session. It is 6:01 PM. The first item on the agenda is a short-term rentals discussion. I believe that's going to be led by Ms. Kozicki and, is that correct, Ms. Kozicki?
Yes, it is.
All right.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. So I guess to kick this off, this is really one thing-
You don't have a microphone. Oh, you do have a microphone.
Do I need to scream? There we go. Is that better?
Well, I can barely, we can barely hear you, but are you coming?
Just go ahead and get a little bit closer if you wouldn't mind. Just go ahead and get closer to the microphone.
Okay, no problem. Normally, I'm really good at this. Good evening. One of the topics we have here tonight for you is in regards to regulations for what we call short-term rentals. Many people know this as Airbnbs. I know we've all had this conversation several times over the past year. However, it kind of keeps coming up because these are in the city. They are not currently regulated right now. But as we go through this slide, you'll see that we are collecting some hotel motel fees for them. So we just kind of want to bring this back to everyone's attention for an open discussion to see, you know, if there's any change or how it should be regulated in the future. So let's go ahead and kick it off. With the rise of Airbnbs and other rental platforms, regulations have become an evolving and complex item for local governments. It's a diverse issue with clear arguments for and against. In favor, many of the times, not only here in the city of College Park, but in other jurisdictions, people find that this is an additional income for residents. Many times, it also allows for additional opportunities when it comes to tourism. And then it also provides additional lodging options for maybe specialized events that you have down here in downtown or at GICC or even in the region. And then, of course, there are some opposition items in regards to this, and that would be the degradation of local neighborhoods and the additional disturbance and/or crime that may come from facilities such as this. So when we look at the next slide on the local context, I kind of want to point out that the numbers change depending on the day, the weekend that you go online to find them. But on any given day, whether it be during a weekday or a weekend, you have approximately 35 to 70 units just on one site, and there are multiple sites out there. They're primarily found in Ward 1 and Ward 3. And when it comes to the type of occupancy being offered, this is really a variety. I know sometimes we think it's just going to rent that whole house scenario, but that's not always the case. Some of the homes just rent private rooms or potential suites, and some are actually in like garage suites or in-law units. And then the average listing pricing also change as well depending on the day and the evening and how long you'd be staying. And those run from about $45 to $300. Now, the one thing I think many people may realize, may not, these uses are actually prohibited within the zoning ordinance. So we don't actually coin them short-term rentals. Seeing how they are prohibited, you will only find them found in the definitions, and that is the terms limited lodging establishments and vacation rental establishments. And then, as we've uncovered this year so far, even though they are prohibited, people are actually paying hotel motel tax fees on them. And the city is collecting approximately $4,400 monthly, which we believe this is the first year this has been occurring, and it will come to an annual revenue of $55,000. So when we look at this from an enforcement side, right, it's a little awkward. So we'll say you can't have them, but actually, there are people who are already paying the tax to have them. So when we think about it of what can be enforced, what regulations are currently enforcing that? And that is planning. And your code enforcement team is the primary culprit. So they are out there on a regular basis, working with complaints, working with ones found, taking them through the court process and trying to mitigate the fact that they're not allowed. Now, if this is something you want to allow, which is completely your pleasure, there will be certain resources that'll be needed. Could be as simple as training, additional inspections, access to booking sites that I'll just need to, little extra information online, and potentially noise meters or other things depending on what we find through this process. That is some of the concerns, not only as you all, but the residents in the neighborhood out there. And then the type of regulatory environment we could impose. We've looked at this, and you know, if it is something that you want to allow, it could be a simple process, or it could have more restrictions and more processes connected to it. Things such as annual inspections, the official collection of hotel motel tax, so that is coming in in the proper way. And we can also look at things about limiting certain areas to possibly 90 days per year or things like that. And then what is the expectation of those who'd be enforcing the new regulations? You may want to consider additional police or code enforcement rounds, just to make sure that the residential areas are still functioning that way. There's no parking on the street, garbage is not sitting out, things like that that we expect to have in those neighborhoods. Now, this process, we do know that it's going to be a little bit bigger than all of us sitting here together. So of course, that would be you all as the elected officials, the city department heads, local businesses, and residents to be involved. And how will this allowance or prohibit, prohibitance affect each department? If it is something to allow, there could be additional licensing processes that would come through. Those would just come through the business licensing process as normal. Certain permitting fees could be attached, and then small additional equipment may be needed. And then how many residents are actually concerned about this issue? I know Ms. Tasha feels those on a regular basis, so I'm sure she'll give you a little more information on that, but she does get- ...in other jurisdictions where they partner with the Main Street. So working together in that partnership, the Main Street can also tell residents or visitors whom they might be able to book with, just kind of things like that. Promoting those different areas that people would go to GICC for, also promoting some of your downtown events that people may want to drive from outside of just the Atlanta area and want to have a nice place to stay for a night or two, to visit the downtown, to eat, to shop, to do everything that we do here. So once again, when we craft an ordinance, if it's your pleasure, some of the different things that I kind of want to throw out there to think of, because this will actually come up, is where do you want to allow them, if that's a possibility? When we look at your housing stock, the immediate thing that comes to my mind is you want them to be able to walk or have easy access to the downtown, to your shopping areas, to your major corridors. We also probably want to look at the size of the house. Would there be additional parking needs and things like that? And then also looking at that neighborhood suitability. For us here, in a technical term, that probably means a zoning classification, whether you want to just permit it outright, make it a special use permit, or even maybe restricting it in certain neighborhoods. And the reason I say that in certain neighborhoods is some of the newer subdivisions may actually have homeowners associations that wouldn't allow them anyway. So that may be a great place to start and look at. And then we want to look at quality of life concerns. So making sure that there's adequate parking, that all of the garbage pickup will happen as normal, looking at any fire pits, any pools, HOA covenants, and anything else like that. The economic development side, as we've kind of talked about, you could encourage people to come in for these special events. And then on a safety side, making sure that building and life safety inspections occur on an annual basis. So if this is something that we decide to go down, an actual ordinance would truly have to be crafted. We want to make sure that it's regulated and has a process that everyone would understand in the most simplest way. So that would of course be delineating what districts they would be allowed in, potentially setting a maximum number of guest rooms, looking at overnight occupancies, possibly considering the number of daytime guests that could be in a home, the number of rentals on a property. This is one thing you kind of uncover when you get a little deeper in the advertisements. If you have just a house and maybe a garage apartment in the back, there could also be a situation where both of them are being rented at the same time by different people. Noise limits, or things like quiet hours just in those neighborhoods, trash and recycling facilities. Another thing that many jurisdictions look at is making sure that you have a 24-hour property maintenance contact. So if anything was to happen, or anybody was to call in for any reason, not to say it had to be a bad thing, maybe it's just a car parked on a street or something that a neighbor's concerned about, who can address it and who can get that number quickly so it's remedied in less than an hour? Additional things we can talk about through that process, which you don't have to include all of them, making sure that their building inspection, a building inspector walks in to make sure that the home is safe. This is something that happens on all commercial locations. And if you kind of think this, this is almost becoming a commercial location. Making sure they have proper business licensing, and then making sure that the collection of the hotel motel tax fees are correct. And then, of course, you know, even if you do allow them, not to say everyone's always going to act right, right? You're always going to have a situation where someone doesn't actually follow the correct process or something happens. So there would still be processes written for code enforcement complaints, for possible revocation or suspension of a business license, or if it's something that's deemed to be a special land use permit, that you all would grant to that property themselves, there's a way to actually revocate that as well. And then, of course, this isn't going to just be a planning item specifically, however, we will spearhead that. So that's going to include the planning office, the permits office, the licensing office, and the building inspections. Then, of course, when it comes to emergency services, the police department and fire department would be involved. One other thing that may come into play is the health department, if there are any pools or hot tubs or anything like that that people would be utilizing. And then when it comes to taxation, it would be the county tax assessors, and then the finance department. And then, of course, enforcement would be available as well. So that would be your code enforcement team and your magistrate court. Now, like I said, we kind of bring this up just to kind of hear everyone's comments and start the dialogue, but this isn't going to happen overnight. I think you all know this, maybe not everyone else in the public knows this, but this would be a actual zoning amendment, a text amendment that would have to go through. So we would not only have to draft it, but we would have legal review it, we would have to advertise it publicly, and then it would come through that process for the public hearing, which would be the planning commission, and then, of course, you all as mayor and city council. When it comes to business licensing, that's probably just a small tweak in the process. Make sure that's an option that they can, they can have with a checklist. When people apply, they know what to do. And then if it's the pleasure to include building inspections, similar items, just making sure that the applications are updated and the process and checklist is cleared for everyone. So that was kind of just an overview. So now we really want to hear about your conclusions, and we have several of us here tonight. Like I said, I kind of spearheaded this, but it's not always just a planning task. If you have some questions for Ms. Tasha when it comes to code enforcement, I think there are two on the legal side.
All right, appreciate it. We'll start with Councilman Clay.
Well, thank you. And this is really probably the best overview I've seen of what's involved with all this. So I think it's excellent as far as covering the subject matter. I have a, I think it's a party house about a block and a half from me. It's an ugly house. I don't know whether anyone will ever buy it as a actual house to live in. We've had code enforcement on top of this. Tasha has been spending a lot of time on this. This past, so I will, I go on my walk. I walk by the place on a Saturday night, Saturday afternoon. I will see car after car after car. They have a nice little driveway in front, so you can park about five or six cars in there, and you'll see people coming in with luggage. I don't know what kind of a party they have. I don't know what, maybe it's all one family, but it's a lot of different cars with a lot of different luggage. This past weekend, we even had a semi tractor truck, tractor parked in there with its engine running. Now, I don't know whether they were having a party or not, because I only saw one vehicle. I think it was on the following morning. Actually, I think that was maybe on a Saturday morning. The problem I have is, first off, when you went through all these things involved with the maintenance, regulation, et cetera, et cetera, I just kept seeing dollar signs, dollar sign, dollar sign, dollar sign. We have been unable to control this well before Tasha's time. I think Tasha is doing a heroic job of trying to get on top of it. I didn't buy a house to be next to a hotel. If I had wanted to buy a house next to a hotel, I would have. We've never approved a hotel next to me, but it could happen. I could have a B&amp;B next door. I think most of these places, like the party house, there's nobody living there. So there is no one on-site to control this. We haven't been able to enforce successfully the law that we have on the books now. So when I see things like, well, we'll regulate the number of people that stay overnight. Come on, we can't even regulate and control whether we have one or not, let alone how many people are staying in it. Another thing, and I'm probably the most militant on this, because I have Ward 1 responsibility. I have all of West Main Street, and right now, and this will be a subject for later on, but I've got the post office saying, we won't delay, deliver mail to some people anymore, because we can't get to their mailbox. And that's due to overflow in parking from Main Street. Well, if we put in a three or four-room B&amp;B next to me, where are these guys going to park, kind of thing? Actually, next to me, there is some place to park, but for most of the houses around, there isn't. So they're going to park on the street? Are they going to block the mailbox? Are we going to increase that problem? The amount of money that we get, we never ask for that money. That's thanks to the state. I would turn down that money personally. I'm only one vote up here, but I'd turn down on that money so fast, it'd make your head swim. That doesn't, that doesn't, can pay for staff for a day or two to regulate this thing. And even if it did, I think we have to decide what College Park, what we want College Park to be. College Park is a residential community. It's a wonderful community. Do we need to bring in, have housing for special events that are going to go to Atlanta? Maybe Main Street Association has a special event. Well, we've got Indigo Hotel, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think, I don't look at B&amp;Bs as being beneficial to us to bring in business to the city. And if it does bring in some, as far as I as a resident am concerned, and I think a lot of my neighbors would agree with me, I, they're, they're not willing. I'd rather have my property taxes go up if we need the money than have a B&amp;B next door. But we have people that blatantly flout the rules. We had another house come up to, within the last several days. I sent Tasha an email reporting that same house two years ago, and it had been going on for a while there. I didn't think that, I don't think I put that in my email to you, Tasha, but it had been going on there for a while. The same advertisement, almost, using the same terminology out on the internet. So what I'm looking for is a way to eliminate B&amp;Bs. That's clearly my position. And I, we need to find a way to do that. There is a way that another city has used, and that's Peachtree City. And Peachtree City has done it, I think, from what I understand, by regulating B&amp;Bs, but making the regulations so strict that it essentially, it's not just eliminating the potential nuisance of the B&amp;B, it really eliminates the B&amp;B.
Councilman Clay, I actually have Peachtree City's proposal pulled up, because I was going to talk about that.
Okay. And if, if I believed that we could do that and enforce that, I'd be all for it. But I have a real problem, and I guess it's just me personally, of doing something that says this, but really has that intent, kind of thing. And it would, and the only way I would approve it would be if I thought this, I'm being very candid now, that this severe regulation would effectively achieve what I've been trying to achieve, which is to eliminate B&amp;Bs. So, and, and if necessary, I know there are people that want to have B&amp;Bs, but I'll bet you, if we wanted to have a showdown, which I don't think I've ever done, and other people I guess have, but I, bring in, bring in all your neighbors, let them fill up the audience of who wants B&amp;Bs. Well, I'll bet you I can bring in more neighbors that don't want B&amp;Bs than somebody can bring in neighbors that do want B&amp;Bs. That's just my personal opinion. So that's my take, but I think this is excellent, because it allows us to see the complexity of actually managing these things. And it only deals a little bit on life safety, but one of the things I've even thought about doing, proposing to council, is that if we have a known B&amp;B, and I'll turn to city attorney on this one, if we have a known B&amp;B, and we have some, right, perfect examples, they've even been advertised, is there anything that would prevent us, in the time when we're trying to eliminate them, of putting a sign out in front, a regular street sign, like you'd put, that this is a no parking zone or something, that says something to the effect, code number such and such of the city of College Park does not permit B&amp;Bs, there is no life and safety inspection, et cetera, et cetera, on those B&amp;Bs? And you just plop that down right in front of the house until we can eliminate it. Is there an issue with that?
I'm assuming it's on the public right of way. I don't see if we couldn't put a sign, we'd likely get challenged on it, but I don't see why we couldn't put a sign to that effect, in the public right of way.
Yeah, it's public right of way, just like you put a no parking sign there. And it might even have some parking information.
And, you know, you mentioned the Peachtree City enactment. Their city attorney Ted Miko gave me a call when they were in the development stages, because he was aware of the College Park, and what we have on the books, and his, well, how can you guys out and out ban them? And they wanted to go a different direction as opposed to outright prohibition. They wanted depth by regulation. And so they wanted to arrive at the same place, but in a kind of a different way.
Right.
And so those are options.
Right.
Provided that there's the will of the council to-
If, if I believed, if I believed that we could write the regulation, I mean, we could copy Peachtree City's to a great extent, right? If I believed that we could write the regulation and enforce it and arrive at that place, I'd be happy with that. But I don't believe that's possible. You know, I, in our present state, we're more financially strapped right now. Tasha doesn't have five additional people to help her out. I just, I don't think that's a viable way to do it. But in any event, I've got a whole bunch of problems that I'm getting complaints about. I get them all the time. I don't always send them to Tasha. Some of them, sometimes I address it a different way, but I get them all the time, just like I'm getting parking complaints from people, overflow from parking from downtown that's causing a, but we'll have that problem with B&amp;B. If you have a party at a B&amp;B, and you have six or seven cars, and they stay over the weekend, and Saturday mail delivery doesn't get made, people aren't going to be happy on that either. So, I'm sorry, I, I just, this, this, we need to find a better way to address this. Thank you.
Councilman Carr?
So Tasha and Casey, right? This was a very well-thought-out, very lucid presentation. I don't think I've ever seen you present, actually. Great job. Good information, good information. The two of you did a great job with putting this together. This isn't a new thing for us that we've been looking at in terms of how to prevent it from coming into the city for many, many years, and there are a lot of reasons why. Ambrose touched on a few of them, but I can't see almost any neighbor that would want an Airbnb next door to their house. I know I certainly wouldn't want one, and my wife definitely would not be interested in an Airbnb being next to our house. But a couple of questions I had, in terms of the number of listings in the city, I guess you go by the websites you can find and just look and see if you can find a website that has a College Park listed. So this 35 number, I guess, it's not too, too real, I guess, it probably, it couldn't be too, is that, is that a real number? Is that just your best ballpark guess from what you see?
I mean, the 35, I would say yes, that's a real number. I think Tasha can speak a little bit more. You know, when they do uncover them, then they'll probably just take them down for a little bit and re-advertise them with a new photo or a new email. But her team actually does have a true understanding of how many are there.
Well, and I'm sure we do in theory, but in the reality, it's impossible to know. You, you know, if you, if you, unless you know every single website where every single Airbnb is being listed on, which, you know, maybe you know that, every single one of them. But, and I'm not asking you that question. Obviously, no one's going to know every single one of them. That's not even a possibility. But I guess my question is, in terms of, is this real, in terms of a real number, do we actually know how many we have, and/or could we ever actually know how many we actually have? That was my big concern there. Now, you know, if you're a city that does not have hotels and motels, you know, I could see- you know, I could see this as a good tool, a way to promote, you know, some revenues in, in lieu of hotel motel taxes, I suppose. And if you're a big city like, I don't know, like, like South Fulton, and your houses are, you know, on two-acre lots, and you're spread, you know, quarter of a mile apart, that, that may be great for them, because they'll never get the caliber of hotels and the number that we've got. I would, the per night, is that a per night cost of forty-five to three hundred dollars? Is that per night?
That's right, depending on what they rent, whether it be just the bedroom or the whole house.
And I, and I get you are bringing this to us. I get, you know, we're College Park, we're hospitality city. I get that. But we're a community with neighborhoods that we wanna keep, like my residents say, they want a disruptive, free lifestyle. I like the sound of that, too. It sounds, the older I get, the better it sounds to me. And we've managed to walk that tightrope pretty well, considering all the company that we get here. But the value of, you know, you know, even the value of a hotel locating in College Park can be increased by us saying, we don't do B and Bs here. In terms of, I think it'd be, it'd be likely to retard hotel flags coming to this city if we have a robust Airbnb program. So, I think we know our lane, and we know, we know where to work our lane. You know, I've seen Airbnbs, you know, I mean, it's a party waiting to happen. Come on. I mean, you know, Super Bowl parties, New Year's Eve parties, more parking issues, more police issues. I don't see one single benefit you can give me that a resident in College Park would say, I would love to have this, as opposed to someone that's not living in the house and wants to make money off of the house. I get that. Well, we got another mechanism for that. You can, you can, you can do a rental property. But in terms of folks and neighbors having strangers next to them in their neighborhoods, that's probably not the best direction to go in, that I would wanna go in. And we have lots of guests in this city, but we have a mechanism for strangers. There are hotels and motels, and they work pretty well, where we can keep, you know, keep, keep a neighborhood together. The other, last thing I'd just say is, in terms of the collection. So, the, the, the forty-four hundred a month we get, this isn't included with the official hotel motel tax digest, I guess. This is just the spare change we can find?
This is just the ones that were called.
Okay. So, so right now, who's collecting this? And is it, I'm assuming it's a voluntary reporting situation?
It's reported by the state and sent to us directly.
Okay, so how does the state find out the B and Bs in College Park?
My, my assumption is that when you're.
In July first of last year, the, the state enacted this tax, and so.
Okay, so, so how, again, got it. How does?
I wasn't finished yet, but they were, they enacted the tax. And so, when, when the owners are registering, they, the taxes are, are applied to the Airbnb or whatever the case.
Got it. So, is the registration a voluntary system? Just if you wanna register or not, or is it mandatory or what?
It's mandatory through their website. So, when they register their homes, they're registering their address with Airbnb.
Okay.
And so, when it's booked, it's booked through their site, and then they assist the tax. And then, to my understanding, they provide it through the state, and the state then pays us.
I got you. Okay, well, we got that covered. It's not worth, it's, it's more headache than it's worth. I mean, the money that we're talking about here is not worth disrupting the neighborhoods where residents probably don't wanna party going on every weekend, you know? Call me crazy, but, you know, again, I don't think, I don't think many people want that next door to them. So, figuring out ways to, to, to make sure that this doesn't come in, if that's a direction we wanna go in, that's one thing that I would wanna look at. And city attorney, I, I, one thing I would also suggest, maybe, we're near the hotel, hotels, we're near, we're at the airport, obviously. Maybe, maybe, maybe I would advise maybe some kind of an Airbnb tip line for residents to help us eliminate this with an incentive. If you, you know, or something like that, if, 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 if we don't want it. Because, you know, a sign is, I mean, you know, a sign is great, but I think if you're a neighbor and you say, hey, well, we got a, you know, it's a fifty-dollar tip line if this stuff is going on next to you, we need to know about it, 'cause, you know? If, again, if we wanna go in that direction. So, just something for thought. But obviously, you know, it's completely unenforceable, so, you know, and again.
That's what I was gonna say, Councilman, I mean, all of this hinges on enforcement. We, right now, have a prohibition which raises enforcement issues. And if we have regulations, that's gonna create enforcement issues. So, no matter what we do, we're gonna have to enforce what we got.
Yeah.
We can't.
Yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's community first, you know, if it's somebody that wants to make a few bucks first, if that's our interest up here, you know, there's nothing wrong with someone wanting to make a few bucks, but you're not gonna disrupt the community for that. And like I said, we got weekend party places for group gatherings. We got hotels and motels for that, so. I, I wouldn't, you know, I don't think, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support it. But this was a great presentation. This was very thorough, very thorough. I do like it.
Councilman Allen?
I think your presentation was great. I think it's very, very good. I'm not gonna express my opinion one way or the other. But I think the key is regulation. How do you regulate it? I think if you have Airbnbs with people in the city or within a certain distance that you can hold accountable, you can do more things. If they're in San Francisco or Seattle, it's hard to hold them accountable. It's hard to call them and say, hey, you got a party going on there in that house, where they're the owner. So, you have to have somebody locally that is held accountable. So, that's all I've got to say.
Councilman Gay?
Well, my take on it is a little different, actually. Actually, I would support Airbnbs for a couple of reasons. One, there are a lot of homeowners who make a living or subsidize their family households with Airbnbs. Some of the residents that I've seen in Ward one and three actually have improved the properties. They take great care of the homes. They watch them, and they're raising their families. The other reason why I would support it is because in Ward four, we have twenty-five residential streets. So, next to my house is a short-term rental. On Williamsburg, there's a crash pad for flight attendants, and it's very well put together. Mount Zion, they're rooming houses. On Skyline, they're rooming houses. In twenty-six fifteen, the last two apartment buildings are group homes for alcoholics rehab programs. I could go on and on and on. Once a forest. Every other apartment is a investor apartment with a different kind of living situation. So, I guess what I'm saying is, these things already existed. If you legitimize them, you might have a better, a better opportunity to control them and enforce them. That's why I would support it.
I agree with Councilman Gay. I, I think that this is something that's already happening. It's, it's clearly already happening within our city. And I think we have an opportunity right now to examine how we, how we allocate our resources. Ms. Hall Garrison, I'm curious in terms of the time that your team spends on this particular issue. Can you, can you give us some sort of idea?
I, I can. I can't give you a reference of time, but I can give you the experience as far as to find one. Going on the website, you have to basically be able to attach the advertisement to the home. And people have gotten so savvy that they don't take pictures of the exterior of the home. They're only taking pictures from the interior. So, you may have a picture, and there's a house exactly on Lau, for example, that it has a crack in between the window curtains. And we have to sit and zoom in to see what is across the street from that property. So, it, it really depends on the experience, but it can take, I would say, just on trying to find through pictures, an hour or two. It doesn't give you a precise address either. It just gives you a, kind of a circumference of the neighborhood of what's there. So, it is very tough to find.
This has been, thank you, I appreciate it. This has been an issue that's been discussed on the state level for a number of years. And there's been discussion of preempting our ability to ban short-term rentals. And I don't think that's an issue that's necessarily going to go away. And so, this may be a moot point eventually, because we may not have the authority to even say that we don't want this type of, of, of thing in our, in our city. And so, it seems to me that we need to take a look, in some way, at a cost-benefit analysis here. And as I said, I've got Peachtree City's, their proposed regulations. They say that it has to be your primary residence, and you have to be on-site. That no more than twenty-five percent of the home can be used for this purpose. There can't, you can't do detached structures or RVs. And all the parking has to be off-street, on a paved surface. And you can only use a bedroom as a guest room. You have to pass, pass a fire marshal inspection, a health department inspection, building and zoning. There's a local contact person that's required, who has to be twenty-one years or older, who has to be able to respond to calls twenty-four hours a day and be on-site within, within an hour. You can't have special events or parties. You have to post the noise and parking requirements, and the phone number of that local contact, and keep a guest registry as well. So, you have to, if you are applying to do so, to use your, your home in this way, you have to do a health and department inspection report, a fire marshal inspection report, scaled architectural plans of the structure. You have to pay a local lodging tax. An occupational certificate for each short-term rental has to be obtained. And you have to have, pass a criminal background check with five years felony-free, two years municipal conviction-free. And you have to email everybody within five hundred feet that this is happening. So, there's a three-strike policy within the twelve-month period. The first strike is a citation and a five-hundred-dollar fine. The second strike is a citation and a thousand-dollar fine. The third strike, citation and a thousand-dollar fine, your permit revoked, occupational tax for twenty-four months. Well, owner and the contact can't apply for another permit elsewhere in the city for twenty-four months. And their proposal was that you submit a twelve-hundred-dollar permit fee as well. I'm not saying that we have to copy anybody, but at the same time, there's, there's a lot of time and effort for our code-compliance officers chasing after something that is already happening. To say that we wanna keep it out, I just don't think is practicable, given the way that people travel and move. I've stayed in Airbnbs, had great experiences, didn't, didn't have parties. But, but we, we've, we've used them from coast to coast, and it's been a great way to be able to experience a, a new place where you have the chance to, to really get a, get a feel for the local culture. I'm not saying we should have them at every single house. Or, you know, maybe there's a, you could only have one within a certain distance of another, or, but I do think that there is a way for us to have a conversation about it, to find out what makes sense for College Park. Because I don't think an outright ban is working. We've got people who are spending a lot of time on an outright ban, and we're still not seeing the results. So, we have an opportunity, I think, to, to give folks more resources, and for the people who want to actually comply, we can, we might be able to work with them. So, I'm not really sure what the, I, I heard two hard no's and one yes and one maybe. I'm not really sure where, I mean, if, if this is something that we.
I mean, I would be in favor, but you gotta regulate them. You gotta, you know, you have different situations. I think we probably have a lot more. I would say we have double that number. I would say we have sixty or seventy, maybe even more, in College Park. I think to Councilman Gay's part, I've seen some people take houses that were drug houses and, and a mess, and nobody wanted to be around them. They wanted the houses torn down. And I've seen people come in and redo those houses and make them into a nice house for the neighborhood. And, and cut their yards and make them look better than any other yard around. So, you know, you see both sides, so I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna take some work. But again, the key is, key is the regulation, because I think we've all, I would say the majority of us have stayed in an Airbnb. And they're very good. But we wouldn't have a party there, I wouldn't think, so.
Well, I, I've got a question for the mayor. If you cited that three strikes and you're out, and you cited the fines associated with that and the process, so, why, instead of going through all the machinations of regulation to get you there, why wouldn't you just execute the same fine structure for having it to start with? For example, let's say you're in a highly regulated environment. Let's say we implemented exactly what Peachtree City had. So, now we have a house that has three bedrooms that are being used for this, instead of the regulated two. First off, we gotta find out that. Right now, we have a hard enough time finding out that somebody is doing it, as Tasha pointed out, and where they're doing it. So, first off, you're having a hard time even finding out that they're doing these little violations. Or even if they're having one, and they're not complying with regulations or registering it, or getting the taxes, or what have you. So, why can Peachtree City, with that infraction, discover it, move in, and give one fine, two fine, three fine? Now you're out, and what does "out" mean? Why can't we do the same thing as that for having it? One fine, two fine, three fine, you're out, just the same as Peachtree City? Why does it have to be regulated to get you to that point? A violation is a violation.
Well, we don't have any, I would think we don't have, we don't have any carrots, essentially. We, we don't, we don't have any incentive for people to comply. We, we don't, we don't have any.
But you always have.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. You asked me the question? So, we don't, we don't have a framework by which people can engage in this legally. So, we, we have sent the entire College Park short-term rental market underground. So, for the people who actually care about running a decent operation, we've, and, and want the opportunity. I mean, I've, I've talked to people who have, who have short-term rentals or have had short-term rentals in, in the city. And I've had several people say, I would love to comply. I don't want to subvert the law. However, it helps with, with my mortgage. It, it is that extra income that makes a difference for my family. So, for the people who, if, if we can find a balance, I think, I think one of the key things about the Peachtree City proposal is that it's the primary residence, that someone's on-site. I think that makes a huge difference when we're talking about this. This isn't someone who lives in Seattle, or LA, or wherever, and they're just buying up homes to rent them out, and they're absentee. I think if, if someone lives in a residence and has a, has a carriage house or has a basement apartment, I think that's a very different situation than, than someone who's, who's, who's just buying up investment properties so they can, so they can churn them out and rent them.
But, but, you know, I, I wouldn't buy for one minute that everybody in Peachtree City who's doing this is in-town and on-site on the weekends that these are going on. I wouldn't buy that for one minute, not for one second. I mean, I've rented a B and B, my wife and I, in South Carolina. It was on the beach, it was really nice. But, but again, our residents, I think generally, are looking for a disruptive, free lifestyle. If you don't know what's coming weekend to weekend, next door to you, and you're gonna be wondering, what am I gonna get this time? You know, it's just not, you know, we talk about stability. You know, it's just not, you know, we talk about stability. I keep hearing all this stability thing. I mean, this is gonna cost us more in police. This is gonna cost us more in sanitation. This is gonna cost us more, I think, in every way that city services can be constrained. So I, I, I just don't see the upside benefit as opposed to a few uh business entrepreneurs making a little money off of their homes at the cost of their neighbors. Now, if you had a fine where, hey, well, you guys violate this thing, you get caught, you gotta pay your neighbor five hundred bucks, you know? That, that would be something to talk about, but we can't do that, you know? But I'd rather see something like that, you know, uh, for violating what we have now. Pay the, pay the, pay the party that really gets the brunt of it.
There, there's, there's really two fundamental issues here, I think. One is the right of the neighbor, for example, not to have my neighbor's tree fall on my house versus the right of my neighbor to, to have a tree and not have to tear it down unless it falls on somebody's house. Uh, it's the same kind of thing here. The right of me, when I buy my house and I look at a neighborhood and I expect that's a neighbor's house, it's not a rental area, it's not a hotel. I have a right. And what, uh, Mayor, what you're saying is that, well, if I buy a house, I have a right to make some extra money having a B and B there. That's a fundamental issue. And I think that's partly where you're coming from. That there are a lot of residents that would like to have a, a rental in their house to make some additional income. Uh, well, are there, you know, it's a democracy, I guess. If there's uh more rental people, more neighbors that don't want rentals next to them than do want a rental to them, that's one way to uh assess the in, in area. Uh, if, if my ward doesn't want to have uh rentals next to them and Ken's ward does, or Councilman Gay's ward does, and Councilman Carn's ward doesn't, maybe you regulate it by ward. If you don't want B and B rentals, go to Clay Ward or Conner's Ward. If you wanna go B and B rentals, go to uh Gay or Allen's Ward.
I, I wouldn't, and your neighbors have a right to do things. And I don't want separate, you know, I don't want Ward Three to be the party ward. But, but my neighbor, Ms. Jackson, for instance, she has a family reunion, right? And she'll call me and say, "Joe, I'm about to have all my folks over." And nicest lady you ever want to meet. So, you know, she's in her seventies, so the parties aren't too wild. Uh, and uh, she even asked, and I'll let them, uh, some of her neighbors, they can park on the side of my driveway. I have a little extra driveway piece and I always say, "Well, they can park there, no problem. Goes fine, well and good." A neighbor, your neighbor may say, "We're gonna be having a birthday party, a New Year's Eve party." What a neighbor does is they go door-to-door, three doors north, three doors south on each side generally and say, "Well, we're, we're gonna have a party here and we wanna let you guys know. We're gonna have some music playing in the backyard, we're gonna be barbecuing, blah, blah, blah." And you let the neighbors know. Most neighbors, great, great, thank you for letting us know. You know, sometimes they get invited to it. You have an occasion, a special occasion. But, I mean, come on now. You didn't move into a house and invest all your money so someone could open up a bed and breakfast business next door to you. I mean, come on. I, I just don't, you know? There's neighborly activities where a neighbor can do what they wanna do. But it, it's a neighborhood. You, you got, you can't just up, "I'm gonna up and up and, and, and start this garage band and we're gonna play all night long until we make it to the Grammys." Well, you gotta think about, you know, well, what, I don't wanna go to the Grammys. I wanna get some rest. I gotta get up at six-thirty in the morning. So, you know, you, you gotta take the freedoms into account. So, I, I, I just don't, if we didn't have hotels and motels and all this hospitality, it might make sense. But we've got something for that. And it's working pretty well. And we can regulate and collect most of the monies from it. So, I just don't see it. I, I don't understand how it benefits the community. I, I just don't understand it.
And Mayor and Council, uh, this, this presentation happened as a result of us listening-
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
You speak up a little bit.
All right. Uh, the presentation happened as a result of, of us listening to some of you all's input and making sure that we provided clarity. There's no decision to be made if this council doesn't choose to make any other decision. We were just trying to provide information.
And I, and I think you did a great job of that. And KC did a great job of that.
Yeah, absolutely. But I, but I think a decision actually does need to be made on this, whi- whi- which direction we are going in on that. Because, you know, summer's here and, you know, yeah. We, I mean, we do need to make a decision on this, if, 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 if we want this type of stuff or not.
I, I would be interested in getting some feedback from the community. Is there an opportunity to do that, Madam City Manager?
Um, by way of?
I'm not certain. I mean, I, I think, but I, I do think that this is, this is a really important issue. This, this is a really important issue for, it's a, it's a quality-of-life issue. And, um, and I think that there, I think there needs to be an opportunity to hear from folks about this.
Okay, let us, let us think about the format for that and we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it, ladies, thank you so much.
Thanks, ladies.
The next item on the agenda is Fulton County Home Ownership Program. Mr. Myers?
Hello. Good afternoon, good evening. Anyway, so what I've got here is that Stanley Emily Wilson is uh over the homeowners at Fulton County. And when we were there at Fulton County, I had a Zoom meeting with him. And we were trying to talk about how we can get people to get into this homeowner, homeowners. We have a lot of people that we wanna try and get them out of apartments and being able to, you know, once they get in a home, when they sell the home, this is a good way to have a savings account. If the, the guy that said, that has Park on his hat is uh, is Booker Washington. Booker Washington has got down there on Gobby Road at the dead ends. You get out, I don't know what that is. You go down to Herschel Road and turn right and go west on Gobby Road. He's got, he calls them cottages, I call them tiny homes. It's just, but he's, but he's got eight, he utilized this program and has got him eight. And so I thought you would be able to see him and that he's uh, it was, it's a great opportunity. And he's got all of his homes sold down there and I'm working with him to get it started. With that, without any further ado, I also got the Art Arthur here, but he goes by Art Christian, which is a nice guy that comes down here to be able to give you more information so you can pass it on. Also, I felt that we were talking to Stanley Wilson, that we're talking about that you have things in six west, single-family homes that you were talking about in townhomes at one time. Well, this is a great opportunity when you say that you would like to have, you know, low, lower homes to be able to get the folks in. This is a great opportunity for us, the mayor, the city manager, and, and the staff to actually introduce this and put this into contract to be able to help with homeownership. And so this is a way that I thought I would bring it in here to you two so you can understand their next step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you to Mayor and Council for allowing me on behalf of Fulton County Department of Community Development, and Stanley Wilson is the director, to give a brief presentation about our homeownership program. And just off the bat, um, I'm not sure if you have a copy of the presentation, but uh, I believe it's on the thumb drive.
We do.
Okay, excellent. Uh, just off the bat to let you know, one of our biggest successes came back in two, in twenty-twenty, actually, uh, late twenty-nineteen, when a developer had heard, got, got word of our program and asked to meet with us. They were building a townhome community in the city of East Point. And we closed quite a few dozen of homes in that, um, in that subdivision. One of the best ways to encourage uh low-to-moderate-income households to be able to get into homes at a price point they can afford is to subsidize it and to do it on the front end. In other words, if you can talk with the developers on the front end and say, "Hey, think about a price point where low-to-moderate-income households and families can afford, can afford it." That is the best way to, to make sure that programs like ours are there to actually help individuals get into their homes. So with the program, our mission is to promote responsible homeownership opportunities throughout Fulton County, uh, which is our service area by offering financial incentives, incentives to eligible Fulton County citizens through down payment and closing cost assistance. Uh, Fulton County Home Ownership, HOP, it's the first-time homebuyers program that provides down payment and closing costs. The program allows, allows for Fulton County to provide up to six percent of the sales price, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And that is of the purchase price or the appraised value. The assistance is offered by Fulton County as a gradual forgivable loan. Uh, there are no monthly mortgage payments or interest rate associated with our second mortgage. So basically, what we do is, um, we do put a lien on the home for six years. It's, it's a zero percent interest, uh, no monthly payments. As long as the resident, um, stays in compliance with the regulations, they're not subletting or renting the, uh, the property out, starting the second anniversary of the loan closing, twenty percent of our second mortgage loan is forgiven. So let's say they get the maximum ten thousand dollars. Two thousand dollars would be forgiven each year, starting year two and going into five consecutive years. So what was, it's called a deferred payment loan, by that sixth-year anniversary, becomes a grant. So it is really a great way to help persons who are first-time homebuyers. What's that definition? Someone who's either never owned a home, hasn't owned a home in the past three years, or if there's been some mitigating circumstances such as divorce and some other things, there are also some exceptions to that rule. The way our program works is really, it's a combination between realtors, real estate agents, lenders, uh, our banks, and the homebuyers. Realtors, lenders, and HOP staff typically inform potential homebuyers and also to have partners, um, such as Jackson and cities like yourself, to promote the program, to help your citizens, helps in a great way because you all have a broader reach, um, and a, and a local reach to the people that are closest to you. Homebuyers choose the lender and loan program that best fits their needs. Homebuyers go through the normal homebuying process. Uh, they are also required, uh, for at least an eight-hour pre-purchase housing counseling. And that's to make sure that people are ready and prepared, not only to get into the home, but to maintain it, you know, for the long haul. Uh, HOP, who, what, when, and where. Assistance is for low-to-moderate-income homebuyers. Property locations are Fulton County, Georgia, outside the city limits of Atlanta, Johns Creek, Roswell, and Sandy Springs. The reason behind that is our program is funded through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Home Investment Partnerships Program. And some of these other areas, other cities, jurisdictions, have their own funding from the home program. And we cannot cross jurisdictions. That's, uh, one of the major reasons. Some others may, uh, have decided, uh, not to partner with us in this, and that's okay too. Borrowers do not have to live or work in Fulton County prior to their application to us. They just have to be purchasing a home within our service area, meet the income guidelines, make sure the purchase price is, um, within the limits, uh, required by HUD. Uh, applicants are also not required to be a citizen of Georgia prior to qualifying for the program. Let's see. I'm gonna move this a little forward. Part of, some of the things that we do on our end is to, we do an environmental review in-house at Fulton County and also an in-house housing quality standards inspection of the home, which is wonderful because, first of all, we make sure that it's not in the floodplain, that not any environmental concerns to, um, that will put the borrower in a bad position. And second of all, to make sure that the house is actually up to standard, uh, as soon as they move in. The one thing we don't wanna do is for them to get into a house that has so many problems that they can't afford to keep it. The home, the income limits that we go by, it's called the home-adjusted income limits, and they go up each year by generally about a few thousand dollars. They have not issued the new limits for twenty-twenty-two yet, so we are still going by the twenty-twenty-one limits. And on the flyer that is on the screen right now, that is the twenty-twenty-one limit, limits that we are still under. We're hoping that it'll come out June first or at least no later than the end of June. Because what that does is it allows, increases the amount of people, especially in this environment where housing prices are going up.
Right.
There are also, the housing price limit, that hasn't come out yet also. But normally, that goes up a few thousand each year too also. And I wouldn't be surprised if it went up drastically, uh, because the housing trust fund purchase price amount, uh, the conforming mortgage loan amount went up almost a hundred thousand dollars. So we'll see how that goes in the Atlanta metro area. Let's see. Let's see, I've gone through a lot of this so far. And, uh, really, those are the basics of our program. We've had a lot of good success with it. There's a lot of interest, um, as we go out into the community, do festivals, uh, do webinars. We always, uh, are looking for new lenders, um, for our program to go out there and reach, uh, individuals, real estate agents, et cetera. And I'll leave it there if there are any questions from Mayor or Council.
Thank you, sir. We'll start with Councilman Clay.
I think it's a fantastic program. Uh, we have tried to do something locally for our employees that's in many ways very similar to this. But this opens it up to everyone. The, I, I see no downside to it, frankly. What is required by the city? Do we have to, like, sign up? Do we have to vote on this? Uh, what, uh, what do we have to do to, if we wanna implement this program in the city?
Actually, to my understanding, there is nothing official that the city necessarily has to do. Your, your residents, um, are already eligible as long as they meet the income guidelines and are purchasing at a price, you know, within the limit.
So all I have to do is put it on my website and say, "Hey," just like I did the other program.
Exactly.
Um, the, the one concern I have is that, same one I think you have, which is the way home prices are escalating.
Yes.
Uh, I just worry how applicable it will be. And, but that doesn't mean it isn't a good program. We ought, ought not to do it where we can.
True.
So, uh, I, you've answered all my questions, thank you.
All right, Councilman Carn?
Uh, this is, uh, obviously, it's a no-brainer. Great program, much, much needed. Now, this isn't under economic development with Fulton County, is it?
It's actually under the community development part.
Community development, okay, so it's not with Samir and that crowd?
No, Stanley Wilson.
Uh, I like it, obviously, we need it. One thing I am concerned about with your lenders list, uh, I've always pushed for an effort for minority business enterprises, disadvantaged business enterprises, and then particularly female-owned business enterprises, in particularly. And I don't know if you have some of those on this list, but I would love for you to follow up with us. And this looks like a twenty-twenty-one list. I would definitely advise you to find some. You know, I'd like to see, uh, some lenders on here that, that, that look like the makeup and demographics of College Park, which are particularly, uh, female business enterprises. So I'd like to see that, if, if, once you modify this, and I'm assuming you're gonna modify this, I hope, at some point. So, yeah, uh, so this is the official flyer here?
Yes.
And it's, the program's already started?
Yes, it's been in existence, actually.
Right, right.
For decades, really.
Sounds good.
Councilman Allen?
I just think it's a great program and, and thank you for, for letting us know about it, be aware of it. Where we can put it out, people can be aware of it. So, thank you very much for coming in and making the presentation.
You're welcome.
And who, we have, who has your contact information?
Jackson does, and I will make sure-
Jackson, you got, you-
Some flyers and my business cards, also.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Gay?
Oh, I agree with my colleagues that it is a good program. I will tell you that, um, with some of the units that are going up, our price point is over the eligibility. And what we have seen is that we, we have a conversation with the builders to, to actually do the down payment where it won't be a lien on, on the mortgage. So that's another option, but thank you for sharing.
All right. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Okay.
Well, we got you, yeah.
Hold on, I, I was, I was gonna speak, so give me one second.
Sorry, go ahead.
I will, I'll, 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 I'll back to you. Um, you know, it, it is, you know, housing affordability is such a, a key issue. And I, I appreciate the efforts of the county and HUD as well to, to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our entire community. Because, you know, this council has said that it is a priority, given our, our makeup, to promote paths, pathways to homeownership. So, thank you so much for the opportunity. Uh, and Councilman Carn, go ahead.
Yeah, again, great presentation. Obviously- Obviously, it's something we want. When, when I was there as Commissioner from 2019 until January of '21, there was a, we, we saw these programs and I said to myself, a lot of the problem was disseminating the information, just getting it out to everybody and going city by city. I guess, is that what you're doing generally?
We do that. We also do festivals in the cities and in the city of Atlanta, because there's a big draw also.
And there, and there's so many projects that the county has that cities don't know about. I had pushed for a city municipal liaison with the county because it was a plethora of information that we would never really get a whiff of. But speaking of Fulton County, there's another project. I understand that the county's got some funding for the, the small houses. And I was approached by several of the commissioners about possibly, they're looking for a city for that to happen in. And that's something I wanted us to take a look at that's, that's available now as well. And to me, it sounded pretty good. And at some point, city manager, I wanna maybe put it on a workshop and have someone from the county come up and talk about it. I don't know if you're familiar with what I'm talking about, but-
Not particularly to that.
Okay, well, this is, this is something apparently that they got this year, the first quarter. But I want us to put it on a workshop as soon as possible and take a look at it because it's available to any Fulton County city. Honestly, I'd like to see us have a first, you know, option on it if we wanted, so.
Also here, Mr. Washington was saying that it was a minority bank that, that funded those homes.
All right, glad to hear it.
That's why I brought you here.
And I'm supposed to be catching up with you, by the way, because you're, you're, that's in my district, by the way. I, I, I saw your sign out there and you're gonna be here for the reg, regular meeting? All right, okay.
Thank you, Jackson.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. So we will pick back up at seven thirty.